I think seven o'clock will begin. If everybody could please rise for the board.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All board members are in attendance this evening. Don't have any announcements? Anybody on the board have an announcement to open up? Seeing none, if we can get approval for the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second is the approval of the minutes from October 16th as well as the executive session on the same day. Follows in order, can I get a motion?
Some move.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have no correspondence for this evening. Brings us to the first public comment session. If anyone has, we'll have one later on. If anybody has a comment, we have microphones at either side of the auditorium. I think we'll just roll forward. All right. No one finished business at this point. The Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Brad Wright and Dan Tarnowski for the Gateway to Technology Program. And do you have some students with you, fellas? Oh, and I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Bannick, I didn't see you there.
I look like a student.
That's true, that's true. Why don't you guys take it away?
I guess it would be better to walk around to the front row.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. We have a few slides on the computer. Nice to be all see. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to present tonight. I've been a teacher in Clarence. This is my 17th year. And I can honestly say I've never been more excited about some of the things we have going in the tech program here at the middle school. I think the opportunities that the students have is on a precedent level. So we have a few slides here. First, I just want to introduce myself. I'm sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teacher. We have Mr. Tarnowski here in the black. He's teaching eighth grade and he also teaches at the high school this year. Mr. Bannick is in sixth grade and in our engineering technology class, which is primarily robotics. And then we have four student presenters here today. We have Sophia Carlson. We have Keith. We have Jania and Lindsay. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. T here. Talk a little bit about some of our recent highlights.
One of the coolest parts about my job is I work with both schools. And I'm hearing at the high school that the kids are coming in with better sketching skills, better inventor skills. So that, to me, is really exciting. We now have a 3D printer since I've started. So the kids get an opportunity to produce rapid prototypes, which is awesome. Mr. Bannick just was awarded New York State Master Teacher. So we definitely want to come in here on that. Yeah. Also, brand new to CMS, we just got a brand new helical head planer, just like at the high school. So a new machine that the kids can learn. It's really cool if you've never seen like a rusty, rough cut piece of lumber go through and come out really clean. And it's really, really awesome.
We always have a very strong and almost like a rock star reputation among the Project Lead the Way schools across the country. One of the things that happened to us when we were in Orlando, Florida, a few weeks ago for the Project Lead the Way National Convention, we were sought out primarily because, I mean, not just because we're amazing, but also it was our computer and our computer system that we end up using and how we make it work with the robotics and the 3D modeling and with the 3D printers and just with everything. Our district does really amazing things with the computer networking system. And I know that there's going to be a lot of people wanting to come visit us just because of that. We do have regular visitations from local districts and local districts from across New York State. We had Roy Hart in doing a visitation just a few weeks ago. We had some student, or I'm sorry, some teachers from Canadega School District. So they're not just local school districts coming to visit us and take a look and see how we are so successful in our program, but it's school districts from all across New York State.
Okay, so the next three students you guys are going to see are my students. And basically, the project was take a chunk of two by fours and make whatever you want out of it. Okay? And they're going to talk about the process it took from beginning all the way to finishing. And we'll start with Sophia.
So we had to make three different designs on a sketch. And we had to write what the measures was and the different functions. I used centimeters and...
Tell them what you use centimeters, I think that's cool.
I'm from Europe, so I'm not used to inches and feet. So I used centimeters.
So you can kind of see her sketches on the left. There's the first three proposals and then the students decide which idea is the strongest and then they'll go ahead and move forward. And then I had another project that's not related to this. It's a 3D printed holiday ornament on the left.
The next step is probably the hardest part. And it is transferring your three sketches to Inventor, which is the program we use to visualize the sketches on a visual level. As you can see there, we have four designs, which is all four of these, I think.
Yep.
Yep. And this allows us to create a plan, which we can see right there on the uncolored drawings. And this allows us to go into the workshop and make the actual projects.
So once we have those annotated designs that you saw, we can actually go in and start with our wood marking out where we want to cut, where we should put some holes. And we got to use different machines like drill press, bandsaw, the new planer. Then we do some sanding on the machines, but also we use a lot of hand tools with like hand sandpaper. And then I put a stain on mine, but you didn't have to. And then we used polyurethane to finish it and make, do a protective coating.
I think they look great. And all that you see up there is all student done. I mean, I threw this stuff together, but they photographed their own projects. They took all the screenshots. Everything is there where I shot this.
I used the 3D printer and I really like using the 3D printer because no matter what mistake you make, you could always go back and fix it. And I made a lot of mistakes, so...
Lindsay has three different versions with her. So she decided to make a case for her phone, which, you know, includes some pretty tight tolerances to get the thing to fit securely and protect her phone. And you can see there's three different ones here. And Lindsay can explain why there's three.
I kept messing up. But the buttons wouldn't match up with my actual phone and it just wouldn't work and it wouldn't fit.
So what was kind of cool about her being able to use Inventor is she got to keep going back and continually revising her product and changing it up a little bit and then bringing out another one. Cool thing about having a 3D printer in our program is it gives kids the opportunity to work with like really fine, small material sizes with tight tolerances without the risk of like injuring themselves. So like this is something that wouldn't be possible to make on the production tools we have, especially with like the kids' current skill levels. So for about 50 cents in material, they're able to print this thing off and then make a revision and change it up again. So they can work through the whole design process in a safe and like effective manner. And at the same time, they're learning to use this program, Autodesk Inventor, which is not like a program for students. It's a program that's designed for professional engineers. At the middle school, they're getting the opportunity to use it at a surface level, but they're getting the fundamentals. So as they progress through high school, they're prepared for advanced coursework. And by the time they leave high school, you know, our kids will report, will come back after college and talk about how easy it is because they have such a strong foundation in these digital modeling programs. So I guess in the end, I'd just like to thank our administration and, oh, sorry. With that, Mr. Bannick.
I'll be really quick. One of the things that I'm doing in my engineering technology class and also with Tech Wars is getting very much involved with robotics. We do use the Vex platform over here, just the same as we do at our high school. And our students are getting coding experience with Java and also C++. The Java's going to be more visual based with icons and the C++ is text based. So it's giving them a great start. If they do want to go into some sort of computer science later in life, they now have a really good base to begin with. They are working with their prototypes, with their robots right now in my sixth grade class. They're just starting to learn how to build them and put different mechanisms together to make the robots go faster. We will begin to attach the motors and have them running through the halls. And if they do want to take it a step further, they can even compete in Tech Wars. And last year, we did have two teams. We had a team of boys and we had a team of girls. I don't know why it ended up that way, it just did. But they did a fantastic job at Tech Wars. And for our first time going there, we really, we came in the middle of the pack. And this was between all high school and middle schools that were competing in this at Tech Wars. So going into that, they are learning coding, they're learning how to start building. I mean, they now all know what a set screw is. That was a big accomplishment instead of just a screw with the head broken off. But the things that they're learning with this, it's something that they can easily transfer into a career later on in life.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present. I think some of the things we're doing and the opportunities we have with the Project Lead the Way program, the opportunity for kids to be processing materials in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then primarily access they have to Inventor and 3D printing, really is some things that help makes our school a special school district in the area. So thank you very much. If anyone would like to stop down and visit, we're always happy to have you guys see the kids in action. Have a good evening.
Thanks, tech teachers. Thanks, students. And congratulations again, Ms. Bannick.
I just, before we move on, I just wanted to say, Lindsay, if you only took three tries to do that, I've done projects where it's taken me like eight or nine tries to get the tolerance is exactly what I want to do. So really good job.
Next, in the Superintendent's report, Mrs. Overholt is going to review all of the exam and state test data from 2017.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Just to begin, over the last five years, the district has made curricular shifts in the areas of reading, writing, and mathematics. These shifts were necessitated by the Common Core. Our performance indicates that the district has successfully integrated career and college-ready skills at each grade level. At the elementary level, this was accomplished by fully implementing the writing and reading units of study and successfully piloting two math programs, Envisions and Eureka Math. In 2017, this was our third year implementing the writing units of study and the first year implementing the reading units of study at the elementary level. In 2017, over 50% of our students were proficient. For our third graders, this was the program that they utilized for majority of their early literacy education. So as you can see, for grade three, this is where we also saw our highest level of proficiency. For mathematics, in 2017, over 70% of students were proficient. At the state, we see an average of 43 to 48% proficiency, meaning that our students are performing 30 to 40% higher than the state average. Shown is the overall percentage of students proficient by school by grade level. In 2017, overall proficiency in grades three and five were within 10 percentage points among all four buildings. Grade four was within 20 percentage points. This indicates consistency in teaching the units of study across all four elementary buildings. Proficiency performance among grades three, four, and five, within one building, is within 10 percentage points, again, which indicates consistency and skill mastery. For mathematics, we see a slightly greater range in performance at the elementary level. However, the levels of proficiency are still among the highest in the region. Each elementary building had at least one cohort that finished in the top 10 out of 100 elementary schools in Erie County. When we look across all four elementary schools, more students in grades four and five achieve a Level Four than those in grades three. We see this because this means students are showing growth as they progress towards mastery within the reading and writing programs. Overall proficiencies across the four elementary buildings and all grade levels are within 12 percentage points, again showcasing consistency in the teaching of the units and the program to all students. When we look at proficiency levels for cohorts, the cohort of students, we do not see a fluctuation beyond 10 percentage points in grades three through five over the last three years. This indicates the program's stability in showcasing student progress. When we take a look at the overall percentage of students that refused the ELA assessments, though slight, we see a decline over the last three years from 20 to 19%. We do, however, note that there is a trend that students in third grade, overall, an average of 17%, that number goes up for fourth grade. 19% of the students refused the assessment over the last three years. To grade five, 22% of the students on average have refused to take the assessment. So we're noting that as students progress through elementary school, more students are refusing to take the assessment. For mathematics, overall proficiency across all buildings ranges between 72 and 80%. We see greater levels of proficiency at grade three and four. At grade three, 70% of students were proficient. And at grade four, we had an average of 80% students proficient in mathematics. When we look at the three-year trend, again, we note consistency for proficiency by building and by grade level. There's, again, a slight to moderate change, approximately 10% fluctuation in percentage points performance from year to year. And overall proficiency has, again, slightly changed across each grade level, noting, again, the range between 72 and 80% proficient. Like with English Language Arts, we see a overall slight decrease in the number of students refusing to take the assessment from 2015 to last year. Again, the same trend. We see less students at grade three overall refusing to take the assessment than we do in grade five. When we took a look at the average, we had an average of 18% of students in third grade, 21% of students in grade four, and 23% of the students refusing to take the assessment in grade five. At the secondary level, like at the elementary, curricular shifts have been made. Teams of teachers have rewritten curriculum to align with the demands of the Common Core. We've also analyzed data assessment trends in order to infuse elements into instruction. The overall proficiency has remained consistent at approximately 60% for ELA. We see a decline in the percentage of students proficient in mathematics. Again, this is due to students in grade eight. This is somewhat of a misnomer. We see 26% of the students are proficient. However, over 50% of our eighth graders take the Algebra Regents exam. 100% of those students were proficient. Those results are not included in the overall calculation. When we look at the three-year trend data, it shows again that the performance at the grade level has remained relatively consistent, noting that at grade seven and grade eight, we are trending upwards in terms of percentage of students proficient. And again, just looking at the three-year trend for mathematics, we see an upward trend at grade six. Again, slight decline, but again, remaining consistent at grade seven. And as I had noted, in grade eight, we have students that, again, a large population of eighth graders take the Algebra Regents. They are not included in this calculation. Also to note, last year in 2017, we actually had more students than in 16 and 15 take the Algebra Regents as an eighth grader. When we take a look at the percentage of refusals, we've seen an overall increase over the last three years in the number of students refusing to take the assessment. Again, noting a similar trend to what we saw at the elementary level. When we look at sixth grade versus seventh grade versus eighth grade, we do have more eighth graders refusing to take the assessment percentage-wise than we do at sixth grade. In 2015, again, we had 24%. And then as we see, as we've progressed over the last three years, the numbers have increased for ELA. When we take a look at math, again, the numbers have actually declined a bit. They remain consistent. Again, looking at 2017, we had a larger number of students taking the Algebra Regents. So those students cannot refuse the assessment. They must take that assessment for high school credit. When we look at historical performance, starting at grade three, again, just to note, overall, we see an upward trend in performance. Going back, again, as I had mentioned, in 2015, that was the first year that we implemented the writing units of study in grades three through five. So again, noting that trend over the course of the last three years. When we take a look at grade four, we see similar trends upward. Again, a slight dip last year, but again, overall, we see pretty consistent performance for grade five. Grade six ELA, again, similar to grade five, but overall, again, remaining pretty consistent in terms of performance. An upward trend in grade seven. And again, an upward trend over the last three years for grade eight ELA. When we take a look at the grade level and where it ranks among districts within Erie County, I'm pretty proud to note that Clarence is within the top five in terms of performance by grade level. Again, we can take a look here. Grade three ranked number two overall out of 28 school districts in the county. Grade four ranked three. Grade five ranking three. Grade six ranked two. Grade seven ranked third. And grade eight ranked fifth. When we take a look at the performance for mathematics, again, much like what we saw with ELA, we see an upward trend for third grade mathematics. Same with fourth grade. Same with fifth. Upward trend in grade six math. Again, slight decline last year for grade seven and for grade eight. Again, beginning in 2014, graded algebra students were not included in the calculation for proficiency as they do not take the grade eight assessment. And looking at the level ranking across Erie County, both grades three and four ranked first in the county for performance on the math assessment. Grade five, third. Grade six, second. Grade seven, sixth. And grade eight, seventh. So again, performed in the top seven of Erie County out of 28 school districts. When we take a look at the high school performance data, again, overall, our students perform very well on the Regents exams. Again, we note there's a general upward trend in student performance on Common Core exams across all disciplines. This indicates that we were successful in the transitioning from old regions to new regions. Last year, we had a 97% passing rate across all disciplines. And when we take a look at mastery, again, noting in global studies, we improved to over 60% at mastery. Again, mastery is 85% or above. Earth Science continues to improve its mastery levels. And both Common Core English and US History, it's 79% students achieve mastery in those subject areas. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Mrs. Overholt?
Thank you.
Yeah, just one question with regards to the test refusals and specifically the removal of the algebra, you know, with the Regents and everything in grade eight. Is this primarily an issue of reporting and, you know, like essentially external communications about the progress in the district? In other words, we're able to still use it as an assessment. We've got other tools that we can use to figure out where our program is, where individual students are, those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
This is more about, you know, like reporting to Albany and all of that kind of stuff? Is that, is that true?
Correct, correct. In terms of accountability, though, however, it is our understanding that we will start seeing those algebra students being taken into account when we look at performance measures. That hasn't happened yet, but soon. Any other questions?
Just briefly, obviously, this is only one of many data points that you have.
Sure.
I guess two questions or a question, maybe specific to the presentation and something to elaborate on. Relative to this data, can you speak to the usefulness of the data as the opt-outs grow to a larger percentage as you get up into the middle school and how that hinders your ability to analyze the data? And then secondarily, just maybe in a broader sense, maybe speak about how the district is using the data to bring it back into the classroom to affect changes?
Sure. In terms of the first question, I'm going to be honest. It's challenging when you are missing a certain percentage of students. We can use other measures, but it's difficult to predict where those students would have fallen in terms of their level of proficiency. So that's a bit of a challenge. And certainly, looking upward into the higher grade levels, when we have 43% of students not taking that assessment, it's data we don't have. In terms of utilizing the data, yes, it's one of multiple measures. We utilize universal screening tools. Obviously, we have common assessment data, formative assessment data that we utilize from within the classroom. We work closely with two data coordinators from Erie One Bosse's. And they actually go into our buildings and work with small groups of teachers to do a deep dive analysis into the data that, on a more granular level, how students are performing by standard and by grade level. So that's how we're, that's how we're getting into classrooms and conveying this information to teachers. I think I answered both of those questions. Okay.
My question is, for proficiency in ELA, do we know why or do we have a guess as to why like Carousel is only 50% to Ledview is 70%? Like there's a 20% gap there? And if we, I mean, are we doing something to help like lower that?
Certainly. I mean, we're looking at, in terms of programming, response to intervention, working closely with students that are below benchmark or below grade level. And we have been looking closely at that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, finance report.
Sure, there's not too much here. The, um, receipts for September, I thought, would be a good thing to put on there. We do get some early tax money in September, even though, though it's not due till October. Um, I did include the budget calendar. That's something we, we give you each November going forward. Uh, one thing, if you look at January 5th, those budget meetings are actually going to be moved up into early December. But this calendar gives a lot of due dates for a lot of our state reporting regarding the budget vote and the Board of Education election.
Any questions on the financial report? If none, can I get a motion for F1 and F2? Second? All those in favor? Personnel, Dr. Patac?
Thank you. We have a number of items before you this evening. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to ask, would you like to, uh, have a separate vote on this resolution or just have it as part of the, uh, regular instructional agenda?
Item P3 you're referring to?
Yes.
I'm fine having it together unless anybody has some concerns.
So, we have requests for leave of absence, a request for reinstatement to active employment, a resolution requesting an adjustment in the remuneration paid to individuals who serve as mentors and the mentor liaison. We have, uh, appointments, uh, including one regular substitute and one probationary, both related to the resignation of one particular individual. Uh, we have another appointment to a probationary position in our Learning Assistance Center at the high school. Appointment of mentors for the 2017-18 school year, both instructional and one administrative, as well as appointment of a mentor liaison. And we also have appointment of Regents Review Instructors for the January Regents Exams. Request to approve, uh, payment to individuals, uh, continuing in TCI training. And finally, we have, uh, or one other item is the extracurricular. We have the winter sports, and that's the addition of one coach at the modified level. We also have academic intervention services at Clarence Center, as well as additions and a deletion to the substitute teacher list.
Anybody have any questions? Uh, just briefly, just for awareness, um, the TCI train, is that the old skip train?
Yes.
Okay. And I think you answered my question I was going to ask. Is that, uh, kind of an annual certification or is there continuing?
It's a, it's a continuing. As long as the person serves in the role, they need to continue to receive training on an annual basis.
Annual, alright, thank you. No other questions? Could I get a motion for items P1 to P5? Motion. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Non-instructional?
You have one resignation for the purposes of retirement after 15 years of service to the district, a change in status, appointments, and modifications to the substitute list.
Any questions on P6 to P9? Seeing none, a motion? Some move?
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, okay. Special needs and student activities.
Uh, the committee on Special Education met on 37 kids last month, and most of them were transfer kids or kids who had some type of quick change in their program early on in the school year. There were 12 preschool kids that we met on, and again, these are mostly new entrants to the preschool program. Nothing unusual.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Could I get a motion for items one and two? Second?
Thank you.
All those in favor? Alright, alright. Board development?
Um, we're asking for the board to approve a couple of sports competitions and two field trips. The first sports competition is the indoor, Boys and Girls Indoor Track Team to the annual Dartmouth Relays in Hanover, New Hampshire, from July 5th through 6th. Uh, the second sports competition is the Varsity Ice Hockey Team to Salmon River to the tournament in Potsdam, February 9th through 11th. Uh, and the third competition is a, a small group of kids to go to the Band Director's Honor Band Competition in Liverpool on March 2nd through the 4th. And so far as the field trips, the semi-annual or bi-annual High School Drama Art Kids to New York City trip is on for approval. And I guess that's it. For field trips and competitions.
Any questions on those items B1 to B4? If none, can I get a motion? Have a second? All those in favor? Aye.
The last item is, uh, we've provided the board with the 5,000 Series from the Board Manual, which is a whole bunch of policies on business operations. Would you like to comment on that, Mr. Mancuso?
Sure. Uh, starting now, the 5,000s and going forward are the large sections of the Board's Policy Manual. There's 11 policies that we've noted that New York State Education Department requires Board of Education to have. And then there are 20 additional ones that through various New York State Comptroller audits for local districts, Erie One Bosse's has indicated that the Comptroller, while not able to require, would recommend that the Board of Education has. Um, these policies, as you go through them, uh, some are slightly changed, some are, are changed quite a bit. Uh, it's, it's something that, remember, the policies are the Board's policy. So, any changes that, that you would like, please send myself or Dr. Hicks an email and we could take a look at them. Where the small sections, we were asking you to look at it at one board meeting and approve it at the next. Um, my, um, timetable isn't tight enough that we need to do that with the larger sections.
So, you're, if I'm hearing you, we recommend maybe taking two months to digest this and get your feedback and, uh, discuss.
I think that would be a good idea with, with the quantity of changes that are suggested.
I fully agree. Any questions on the policy, being it's informational only? Okay. That brings us to our second and final public comment session for the evening. Anyone in attendance care to address the board? Alright, quiet group tonight. Alright, uh, so, final items in our package, uh, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings. Uh, next board meeting is on December 11th at Ledview Elementary at 7:00 PM. Uh, we have a few, uh, events as well in the schools. Uh, the Fall Play at the High School, Death of the Salesman, is, uh, this, the end of this week, the 16th to the 18th. Um, and we have a SEPSE meeting on the 14th as well, followed by, uh, Winter Corral and some other, uh, usual, uh, pre-holiday concert performances by our performing groups. No other questions? I need a motion, uh, to adjourn to executive session for the per-
My-
Yes.
If I could just make one comment. I, um, had, recently had the opportunity to attend Staff Development Day with, um, Kristin. She allowed me the opportunity to shadow her, and I just wanted to say that I felt that the sessions were very engaging and were spot-on to what the school needs are. So, I'd just like to call her department out and thank them for doing such a good job and providing so many choices to the teachers.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, those, alright, so, anybody else have any other comments? Um, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing the CTA negotiations, litigation strategy, and matters leading to the employment of a particular person. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.